All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call it to order the Farmington Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 17th, 2018. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, item 5, 5A, well, consideration superintendent's report to 2018-2019 school opening.
It's a bit of old news. We've been in school a couple of weeks, but we just welcomed back approximately 4,000 students on August 27th. Kim and I attended first day of school events. We visited classrooms. Police Chief Malanson, our SROs, and many Farmington police officers also attended the first day of school. That's a tradition in Farmington. We did face challenges as the students in the audience and if there are any teachers or faculty with the heat wave during the first and second weeks of school. And we had three early release days because of the heat. And we really do thank our students, faculty, staff, and families for their patience and understanding during the extreme heat. There's information just about our attendance on the very first day, 3,986 students, and just some information about first day opening activities.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Okay, thank you. Next item, 5B, summer school programs report.
So we had another really exciting summer for summer school enrichment and programming. Kim always does an introduction and invites individuals up to the table, but just another stellar summer for us in Farmington.
Absolutely. We had some new challenges this year in shifting some of our programs to a different location. But across the board, I would say through strong leadership from Karen and others in the district, we had an amazing summer, happy children, lots of learning, and really well-managed programs. So I'm going to have Karen Marino come up and speak about them.
Hi.
Hi.
So we were quite busy again this summer. As she mentioned, we were at two separate schools for our programming. We were at Irving A. Robbins Middle School for the Excel Camp, for the Summer Exploration Academy, which is the elementary age summer program, and the ESY Extended School Year Program, as well as the Chinese Language School, which was there for a week, and the preschool program too, I'm sorry, preschool and kindergarten readiness program was there. And then at West Woods, we had some enrichment programs, as well as the performing arts programs, so strings, chamber academy, musical theater, and bands. There was a new, there was a little bit of change of leadership to the programs this summer as well. Carl Schugart has stepped aside as far as being the director for the Strings Academy because he was interested in piloting a new program this year, actually. So we piloted the Chamber Academy, which focused more on the older students who wanted more individualized instruction and opportunity to sort of perfect their craft, I guess. And so David Kramer took the role as the director of the Strings Program. He had been assistant director for a number of years, so he took the reins following Carl's moving over to the Chamber Academy, but Carl was still very much involved. And that went well. It's going to probably be a program where we'll see a bit of growth over the next few years, and especially with Carl at the helm. Numbers for the programs were pretty much on par with how they had mostly been. Excel Camp experienced an increase in numbers. Some of the performing arts camps increased, I'm sorry, experienced a decrease in numbers, but some of the times were changed. Band Academy shifted from the afternoon to the morning, and it started right after school concluded for the year. Actually, it was supposed to start one of the days where school was still in session, and then it got bumped because of the snow days. So there's a little bit to be worked out there. But overall, we had a lot of kids in our programs and a lot of fun. And we're in the process of meeting with all the program managers now to, you know, get their feedback as far as how they think the summer went and just kind of improve for the next year. We will be merging again for next year due to some of the construction that's due to take place at IAR. Not sure if the schedule to be worked out yet, but we have to merge back at West Woods. But the plan for the future is to, because there's so much expansion, is to see if we could operate in two schools in town, but that's to be decided. So it's a lot of just trying to put the puzzle pieces together again for next summer to make it all work for everybody and make it a great summer for everyone, and so everyone can have an equal opportunity to have fun, I suppose, and again, make it just work so we're all all happy.
Well, I'd just like to thank you for, once again, it sounded like a broken record, but the wealth across the spectrum of offerings is just, it's amazing to see what the program achieves in terms of the offerings.
I have to give a lot of credit because I went on maternity leave, actually, in March of last year. So right as everything was really ramping up, I went and had a baby. So.
Congratulations.
Amy Ferrari did a phenomenal job, and Lori Wirebeck of putting together the tail end of the summer. Amy was at West Woods overseeing a lot of the performing arts programs and kind of ruled with the changes of everything there. You know, we had to hire additional nurses and additional security guards, and Amy took a lot of that on towards the end of the year, last year. So I really appreciate her time and her effort, as well as Lori. So, you know, she couldn't be here tonight, but I did want to make that known that she was an integral part of putting the summer together, you know, while I was home relaxing. But I returned the first day of summer, and I mean, everything pretty much ran like clockwork. I mean, the minor hiccups here and there, but all the program managers were, you know, on task as usual, just, you know, really are masters of their craft and just know what to do. And it all ran like clockwork, even with, you know, the new programs and the new schools and all that and the changes. It worked. You know, we want to make it continue to work, whether we change buildings or go here or there, we make it work.
Any questions or comments? Elizabeth?
So first of all, I think that your idea of relaxing is different than not. I'm not sure you know what that word is. But the other thing is, I just want to know if there was any feedback or how people dealt with the two schools, like at what, how did it go?
So I think for some people was a little bit of, oh, my gosh, we're going to be at a different school. I actually just met with two of the program managers this afternoon, Sue Wolfle and Megan Lamar, regarding how their teachers felt about being at IAR, because that was really like the big change. Excel Camp, we're kind of flexible, we kind of go anywhere. And, you know, Amanda Gorski's great at making it work, and Brian's great at making it work. So we're kind of just a make-it-work crowd. But, you know, it was, it took some extra planning for the teachers to kind of get ready since it is a building designed for older students, and we had some younger students there. But they actually really liked it. They liked, you know, they made the classrooms work. We had to bring some additional materials, but they liked the campus-y feel of IAR. They were able to go to East Farms and utilize the playground and the fields and the pond area there. They had the bigger fields at IAR, they had the bigger blacktop. There was just kind of more room to spread out. There was more parking. It just worked out as far as like there was space and everybody didn't feel like they were on top of each other. As far as West Woods goes, Amy could probably speak a little bit more on feedback there, but I think the school appreciated not having so many people there at one time. And, you know, for next year, like I said, we have to figure out a way to kind of make it work for everybody. But overall, I think it was, once we figured it out and saw that it could work, and even Abby Rohr with Special Services, who supervised the program this summer, and she was kind of, you know, she was without, I mean, Ted took over and, but then Scott left, and there was a whole transition there that she was dealing with, and she handled it beautifully, just trying to, you know, make it, make it work. And she actually liked having the IAR space as well. So, you know, I haven't had too much parent feedback personally, but through the program managers, the parent, you know, other than the minor things here and there, overall, the parents were not dissatisfied with the change in location. And the Excel Camp had to stay with where the academic programs were because we have a lot of students who overlap, so they go to both programs. Performing Arts, not as much. We did try to offer some alternate programs at West Woods. So the Strings Program had a full-day option, and their band program had an option in the afternoon. It was actually a new program this year with an art teacher and a PE teacher in town that they did a Motion Balance and Creativity Academy, which kind of drew everything together. So there was opportunity for full-day extension. We tried to make that as best we could. But overall, I haven't heard anybody vocalize that they were really upset about it. We tried to make the best decisions that made the most sense, I guess, so.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Not to put you on the spot, but if you're soliciting the feedback and you're going to, you know, think about it, but if you look prospectively to next year, any areas you want to continue to develop or you'd go in a new direction with some things?
Next year is pretty tricky because we have to kind of reconfigure everything because we're back at West Woods, but we are going to try to reconfigure it, that all the programs are not running. We're going to try to do two tracks with the academic elementary programs going first, and then they're out, and then the performing arts programs coming in. So they're not there at the same time to help the custodial staff and help the office staff there, and just not have so many people there at the same time, because at some point it also does become a little bit of a safety issue. There's all these kids coming and going, you have buses and you have cars and you have parents and you have parking, and it just, we want to make sure that everything, everything works and everything fits, and it's a comfortable fit for everybody over the summer, and we're not overdoing it. So, you know, we definitely look into all the options, and we look into the high school, and we look into the elementary schools, and just try to determine what is the best space. So the preschool probably will be back at Noah Wallace and their space. High school programs will probably take place here, and as far as everything else, I think we are going to divide into those two tracks. And then in the future, going forward, once IAR is back at the table, re-explore bringing more programs there and just do what makes the most sense, I suppose.
Okay. Anything else?
We spend the year like trying to evaluate it and figure it out, meet about it. So we're already talking about this summer now.
Yeah, well, that's why I asked the question, because it's going to be here before you know it.
Yeah, we are ready. The gears are already turning. So we started talking about next summer, like this summer.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, no, you guys do fantastic work, and it's, the program is an amazing offering to our families in the district. It really, really is the, as I said, the breadth of offerings is fascinating. So, thank you, congratulations for coming back.
Good work.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 5C, Engage Learning Update.
So we have lots of updates that really relate to our first agenda item, which was the opening day of school. So at East Farms, physical education highlighted Cooperative Games Unit, focused on communication, collaboration, teamwork, and problem-solving. East Farms also is focusing on self-direction and resourcefulness through inquiry and specials areas. Noah Wallace had a flag ceremony on the first day with a focus on academic mindsets. Classroom norms have been created across all classrooms at Noah Wallace to create an environment of belonging for our students. IAR initiated a new tradition for the first day of school with music, amazing music, student speakers, and inspiring words from Mr. Hurwitz and Ms. Arizari. They also raised, for the first time, class flags, the class of 2023 and the class of 2024, like takes your breath away when you think about it, flags, which also, it's a new tradition for the school. Union also is working on academic mindset, so you're going to hear a lot about academic mindsets this year, and basically statements like, "I belong to this academic community, I can succeed at this, my ability and competence grow with my effort, this work has value to me." So we're working with students on those academic mindsets, and it really is a part of the school's development priorities at Union. If you go and go to the stairs area, there are new number patterns placed on the stairs to help students to learn to skip count and their times tables. At West District, they had a great first day. I was there with Chief Malanson, had a ceremony with a focus on relationships matter, and that all are welcome at West District. And at West Woods, they had an opening assembly that focused on dig deep, the dig deep challenge, and students showcased accomplishments, celebrated collaborative learning process by creating shovels in a collaborative group. And the shovels are displayed as a symbol of each homeroom's shared goals and commitment to digging deeper in 2018-19. So lots of great Engage Learning updates for the board.
And how's Scott doing over it?
Wonderful.
Is he? Okay, good.
Great start.
Great. Okay, any questions for Kathy? Okay. Next item, 5D, appointments, resignations.
One resignation.
Yep. Next item on the agenda, 6, Budget Impact, Budget Update.
Only thing I'll mention to the board right now, in the business office, we're starting to prepare for the upcoming audit. The auditors are scheduled to come in the second week in October. So we're doing a lot of, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, we've done our state reporting for the year, so now we're compiling our audit book in preparation for them to be coming in.
Any questions for Vince? Okay. Mark, no? Oh, okay. Sorry. New business? We have no new business. I guess we're off to a good start, so. Item 8, report to the board chair. I've done the report at this point in time. Go to item 9, Consideration Committee Reports, Personnel Negotiations. Mark?
We are, we just met on the 6th, and unfortunately, we are taking a little bit of a longer break before our next meeting. We will be meeting on October 22nd, so it's been a little bit of a slower process than usual, but we're getting through. Hopefully, we'll see a lot of good things at the next meeting and be able to share more at that point.
Okay. Great. Okay, Policy. Christine?
We just met before this meeting, so we should have the legislative updates on one of the future agendas.
Okay. 9C, Curriculum. Michelle, no report. 9D, Communications. Ellen?
No report.
Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda, 10, Report to Committee Resignations. Correct. No report from, on that right now. 10B, Farmington High School, Community Survey Ad-Hoc Committee. We met last week. At this point in time, the consultant we retained came in and met with us in sort of a brainstorming, open discussion format to sort of help frame the issue as to give feedback, what we thought collectively as a group would help in addressing and drafting survey questions. So we'll wait for that to come back on the data from the consultant, and we'll start moving forward with the questionnaire and the survey. I mean, we're going to be on a pretty tight timeframe that I finalized yet, but, you know, from soup to nuts, once we get, hit the, you know, the road with that, and it's going to be eight, seven, eight weeks, so it's going to go pretty quickly. So hopefully, we'll have a little better, you know, clarity around, you know, the survey details in about a week and a half time, and then we'll take it from there. But it's moving forward, and I think it was a very productive session. We, you know, probably came in with different views and all kind of moved in a good direction, so it was very positive, yeah.
It was excellent. It really was.
Yeah, so.
Kudos to Bill Silva. I just want to state, you know, for the record, Bill Silva really did a fantastic job of helping focus our work. I really, he changed my mind about a lot of the thoughts I had, and that was, it was really appreciated. Yeah, please, I definitely want to make that clear.
Well, in a very simple way, he billed admonished, I guess, maybe not be too strong word, but said, "Be forward-looking, not backward-looking."
Right, don't dwell on the past.
Yeah, don't dwell on the past and, you know, go forward.
But in a way without, but acknowledging the concerns of people that they were, he validated those concerns and tried to refocus that so that it's constructive going forward. And it really was very, it was very simple and very, very well-done.
Yeah.
Our next meeting's the 27th, right?
Yes.
Yep. So any questions on that? Yes, Andrea?
Do you know how many people are going to be surveyed?
The number is 400, but there could be some flexibility on that, depending on if, you know, they hit too much of a target groups or demographic groups, or they may, but 400. And it's fascinating because when you're dealing with these professional consultants, increasing the survey group does not change the analysis at all. It might move it a point or two, but if you did 1,000, 3,000, or 5,000, you're not going to move it much. I mean, that 400 is going to be reliable number of surveys.
Right, for the kind of precision that you would get at those additional, it wouldn't make sense economically.
Yeah, yeah.
The data's going to, they're going to select their pool from the census data that we have for the town, so that's how they're going to create, that's where they're going to start with their list.
Yeah, and if they find it skewed maybe one way or the other, we can supplement it, but it's a, it's a pretty tight number, which is fascinating. And that allows it to move a little quicker, you know, you can get a quicker feedback, but if the data is coming back one way or the other, and a certain group is not being represented, you know, we can change that, but it's 400. Yeah.
It's going to be phone surveys, not online either, right? Which is also really interesting to learn about that process.
Yeah. So, anything else? Okay. Next item, 10C, the High School Facility and Financial Ad-Hoc. Christine?
So we are meeting tomorrow, 7 o'clock here in the library, and the next meeting after that is scheduled for October 16th, also at 7:00 right now here in the library. Nothing to update from the last meeting.
Okay. Okay. Next item, 10D, Focus. Bill?
I'm waiting to hear from, we met in June, had a great meeting, and then my understanding is they're going to circle back to me at some point in August. I have not heard from Fred, I'm sorry, Ed or Nancy, so maybe you staff can reach out to them to find out when they're meeting again. That would be great, because we had really good conversations, and I'm looking forward to a really good year with them this year.
10E, Public School Foundation. Christine?
So we met, I think it was last week. They have a really nice group of people. They've done their, I don't know if anybody saw on Facebook, they did their awarding of their grants this year. Save the date, 11/9, November 9th, is their trivia B. They're looking to get a ton of participation. That's their biggest fundraiser, so save the date on that.
They used to have a board of ed team, right?
Kathy was on the wedding team last year.
I remember there being one.
Helen, Jean, all of you.
It was not a board of ed team. Can we make one?
Yeah, we can make one.
Yes.
All right.
That would be fun. Next meeting is October 16th.
16th, okay.
I understand. I talked to Elizabeth Norwood over the weekend. I guess there's a lot of people showing up to help, too, it sounds like.
They have a great team there now. They're so engaged. They are really excited to not just participate, but move that organization forward to the future, and they're very engaged. It's a fun meeting.
Thank you, Christine. Superintendent Sinter's Classic Athletics Advisory Committee. Christine?
Oh, well, we had our meeting, you know, in this last spring, but I don't, I don't think the next one is going to be scheduled until after the fall sports season, right?
Yes, that's twice a year.
Yeah.
Okay. 10G, Chamber of Commerce. Michelle, no report. 10H, Green Efforts Committee. Andrea?
We met last week, I think on the 10th, and right now, the focus is on identifying goals through 2020, and I think they've streamlined it to focus on waste reduction in the town.
Thank you. 10I, Ad-Hoc Cafeteria. Liz?
I don't have any report, but I, do you know when the next meeting is? Is there one scheduled?
I believe so. I believe it's in October.
Okay.
The second meeting in October, before that meeting, I believe.
All right. I just couldn't find it on my calendar. You know it's coming. I know it's here. It's on my calendar, I just couldn't find it. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Liz. 10J, Health and Wellness. Ellen?
No report.
Chris, can I make a point of order?
Absolutely.
We started our meeting on time, I know, but I know there's some folks in the public, and the audience came in a little bit after we started, and I'm wondering, because there isn't any more public comment on our agenda, perhaps we could allow, or make a modification to allow some folks to speak, or is that not, is that not appropriate?
Agenda to?
It's a regular meeting.
So we can't?
No, I think it has to be like a supermajority, right?
I think that's right.
Yeah.
I think that's right.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'd make that motion if I could to, to allow for a second opportunity for public comment, because as it stands right now, we're going into executive session, and then we're done for the night. So I don't want people coming down here tonight not having an opportunity to speak if they are indeed planning on speaking. So I'll make that motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
My second.
Okay. Any discussion? Liz?
So I think public comment is great. I think everybody should come make public comment. I used to make frequent public comments, as you know. I just think that we have rules, and we started on time, so I don't, I don't know, I'm going to wait to hear how other people feel about it, but I think that there are rules, and I think that we have specifically modified our policy on public comment in the past, recent past, to be more rule-oriented, I guess. So I'm just, I'm curious to see how other people feel about it. I'm not inclined to bend the rules, because then you just wind up bending them all the time.
That's fair. I just want to have a conversation about it.
Ellen?
No, that's fine. That's why I want to hear other people, you know? Like, I just don't want to get in a rut of bending them all the time.
I respect that. And if my motion fails, I'll be okay, I'll understand that, but I just want to at least have the conversation, because I know, I know for a fact, there's a few people that are going to want to try to speak, I think.
I understand.
Ellen, yes?
I just, and I'm going to add perspective, because I sense some maybe reservation for doing this, and I just want to say I respect your opinion, because we do make rules. I will say, I've spent the majority of my time on the board. We had public comment in the beginning of the meeting, right at 7:00, and at the end of our regular session. So I have spent most of my time on the board with the opportunity at the end, and I've always agreed with that. I didn't necessarily, I think I voted on the policy to remove it at the end of our regular meeting with a bit of reservation, because things do come up, and if a member of our community is going to sit through this meeting and wants to make a comment at the end of our meeting, I think it's okay. But with that, I do, I respect our new format, but I probably do agree with Bill, and I, but I, I don't want to make a habit of this.
I'm not looking to make a habit at all. I just think that we owe these people so much courtesy to have the conversation, that's all.
And it hasn't been that long, the process is maybe under a year old, so there might be.
I'm good with whatever, but I just, I get it. You're 100% right. I voted in favor of the policy as well.
Okay. Mark?
For a change like this, does it affect the fact that it has to be posted on an agenda somewhere? You're adding something?
So I believe that a regular meeting, on a special meeting, I don't believe you can add agenda items.
No, you can't.
But on a regular meeting, if you have a supermajority, so two-thirds of the board would have to vote in favor of adding.
Oh, you can't.
Because it hasn't been posted, yeah, in that way.
Well, that's what I mean. If it hasn't been posted, are we allowed to do it? Under statute?
I think it's allowable. A lot of times, the board has to weigh, you know, if it was a topic of some sort that we did not give the public the opportunity to see, and therefore, they didn't come because that wasn't on the, you know, they didn't see it, you know, you weigh the pros and cons, right? So it's really up to the board and the vote of the board.
Okay. Any other comments? Andrea, yes, yeah?
I was going to say, as much as I welcome public comment, and I would love to hear from any member of the community who's here, I do believe that we should follow the rules, and maybe down the road, we need to consider adding public comment to the end of the meeting again. I don't know, but for right now, I feel like we should follow the rules.
Okay. Chrissy?
Okay.
I'm good.
You're outside? Okay. I guess, you know, my thoughts, Bill, I echo the concerns of you and Liz, but I, maybe as a lawyer, I worry about precedential value of doing this, and it's not, it's not, you know, because two weeks from now, I hope that when people will come, they're equally as passionate about their issues to address to us in two weeks' time at our next meeting. But I do worry about the precedential value of doing this. I appreciate the constraints put on everybody's time, and getting here may be difficult, but, and I would never want to deny so on the opportunity to speak in front of us, but we have our procedures, and I'm going to stick with it, yeah.
I respect that.
Yeah.
Can I just add one thing?
Yeah.
So I, I hope the public knows that at any time, they can make a comment by, all of our emails are on the FPTCT.org website, so it's, and I think, you know, that's a way to get your comments heard. It's not like it's only this one-minute period if you miss it in the beginning of a meeting, I guess is what I'm trying to get across. There's plenty of opportunity to have your comments heard. Actually, sorry.
Yes, Chrissy, yeah, absolutely.
I would like to say, you know, I wasn't here for that vote, and I actually didn't realize that it used to be that way. You know, that's, you know, my not knowing that, and I agree with Andrea, that we should, you know, look into that maybe at some point, because I know for one, sometimes with sports and everything, it's really hard, and I know that that's making, but at the same time, I do understand that we do have rules, and, you know, I'm learning them as quickly as I can, so.
And, okay, thanks. And if it's subject to being revisited in front of the entire board, I'm open to that, so Christine, I know, you're outside, okay?
I'm good.
Okay, so Bill's motion on the table to add an additional public comment, I'll just go around because we need a super majority. Andrea?
No, nay.
Aye.
Nay.
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 Aye.
Okay. So you got that done? Okay. Okay, so the motion's overruled. All right, next item on the agenda, item 11, executive session, I give motion to move into executive session.
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions, we're in executive session. All right, back in session. Next item on the agenda, item 12, Jeremy, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.